All right, I have five o'clock, so I'll call this special call council meeting, Hartford City Council on November 21st, 2019 to order. And I'll ask for David if you give us an invitation, please.
Yes, those bow our heads. Father God, we thank you for this night, Lord. We thank you for this meeting, for the city of Hartford, Lord. We asking you to touch and let us be on one accord as we go through this tonight, Lord. And we doing this for the city of Hartford, for the people. And we looking for growth in this city, Lord, and new things. In Jesus mighty name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, we'll open the floor for any investors that want to address us. Jeremy, you want to speak to the council?
I'll go first. Tonight coming to peace, I'm like.
Okay.
I've put together a proposal to where I'd like to earn the ability to become the city of Hartford's outdoor equipment supplier. And unfortunately, I don't have enough copies. But this is kind of a list of units that are kind of what you're using now. And this is our current products, and this is what the city's price would be. In addition to that, you would get 20% off Echo handheld equipment. We also have UTVs, and I've put together two down here that I think would serve the city. We have other models and stuff that are not listed on here, but these are the ones that are most equivalent to what you're currently using. And as well, I wanted to bring this. This is a community project that we're doing. We're doing a raffle to benefit nonprofits. We ran all of it on Facebook, and people were nominated by the community. On here is a list of the ones that were nominated, and this is kind of like our miniature press release we did on it. So I'll leave that here, too.
You want to explain to them about your new venture?
Yeah, I can do that. I've just started a powersport dealership which is down in the old EMS building. We carry Spartan mowers, Intimidator UTVs, Echo handheld equipment. We also carry Echo Bearcat and Billy Goat, which both pertain to you guys in the fact that they're debris loaders, mulchers, stuff you pull behind on the trucks. We're also a full-service repairing parts dealership for most major brands. Of course, some of the brands, if I'm not a carrier, then I can't get an OEM part. It's aftermarket, but I do have the ability to do that. In addition to this venture, I also own a lawn care landscape company in town. But this is kind of my newest thing that I have here. And then most of these items, one or more of these are available to be viewed. You know, if I don't have them, there'll be an equivalent there, if not an exact of one of these. Like I know right now, like on the UTV, I do have one of the 1,000 ones there that could be viewed, and it's similar to the 750. There's some minor differences, but I could point those out. And the same thing on those mowers. I know I have one of the 54-inch ones. I don't have some of these other ones, but...
There's a real pretty one on display at the Wellness Center.
Yep, that's it. Yeah, and that's part of this community project that we're doing. And the Wellness Center was one of the nominees for that. So I'm just trying to get the word out there. Up until now, as far as I know, you guys only had one option if you wanted to stay local. So hopefully, this will help the city as far as pricing budget-wise, and also, I mean, even if it's not with me, maybe to get you a better deal with whoever as well. Of course, I'd like the opportunity to earn your business. You know, I don't feel like you owe it to me, but I'd like to prove that and have the opportunity to serve you guys. So that's pretty much, like I said, that's pretty much the offerings. And I've got way more than that, but that's the most compared to what you're currently using. And then I'll leave this to, if that's okay. It's about the community project. So if you guys have any questions for me, I'm not much of a public speaker, so.
You're doing fine.
We usually grill them pretty good.
Well, I'm ready, you know. I'm trying to be ready.
Anybody have any questions?
We grew up pretty good on the hills.
Yeah, absolutely. Like I mentioned, I own a lawn care company. Up until this year, we ran the Skag, and actually, the Spartan, SRTXD is what we switched to, and it holds hills better than those Skags do.
I moved up out of school.
Yeah.
You know, I run that hill.
Yeah, and I even have a demo of that SRTXD.
Do you?
Yep, so come get it and run it, even if you don't cut grass, just to see if it'll hold the hill the way you want it to. But it's got 16cc pump, so that should be plenty. It's got a big engine, 37 horse, so.
You don't have any push 26-inch mowers?
No, I don't, not yet, but I, you know, I need to explore that option for sure.
She tried to tell us she'd push a mower.
She pushed a hill is what I'm hearing.
When was the last time you started a lawn mower?
Well, when I fell off of that one, that's the last one I ventured. Everyone I buy, somebody comes and gets it, because they think I'm going to kill myself.
Oh, the engines? I listed them on here, the ones that I proposed to you guys.
Who does these? You all building them yourself?
No, the mowers are, they come equipped with these engines, and these are Briggs, big block Vanguard engines. There's also Cowie engines available. I just put together what I would recommend, I think would best suit your needs. The Cowie engines are usually $500 to $800 more per unit roughly. But in my opinion, commercially, these are what we run, you know, on my company. So those are the ones that I would recommend. But like I said, there's other options. I mean, like you could even, there's step downs from these, but these are compared to the current X marks that you're running.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Come down, and like I said, if any of you guys want to see them, the UTVs are in-house, the mowers are in-house. So, and I can explain to you, you can ask more questions. I can provide information on other models. The phone number is listed on the top, and so that is it.
All right.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody? Okay, we'll go ahead and look at the minutes from our last meeting. If you take a quick gander of those, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt those minutes as they've been presented. Unless you have some clarifications, questions, additions, deletions.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Questions made.
A second.
Second. All in favor, up at the 10.
Do you all have a page, too?
Yeah, that's all. It's three, right?
I don't have.
Oh, yeah, those are two.
Oh, no, it's, oh, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. I thought that was the, or it had different, it had different fonts on it. Yeah, I got it.
Okay, then Tara, do you have anything for us tonight?
Not much, not really done with it.
Okay, all right. Take a look at the bank statements there. If you have any questions about any of those, or any incomes, or the account balances, account reports, anything, that would be at hand. I know we try to make these available to you before the meeting so that you can spend a little more time looking at them.
Make a motion to accept the account balances.
All right. Is there a second to that? All right, anybody have any questions or discussion about anything? Okay, all in favor, up at the 10. Thank you. Motion carried. All right, we're down to our old business. We have right now the second reading of the parking ordinance on West Union Street. Somebody will read that for me, and then we can entertain a motion to adopt it. Just the top part though.
I read it.
All right.
An ordinance imposing parking restrictions on portions of West Union Street in downtown Hartford.
All right. Anybody have any discussion about the ordinance at all? Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance, Ian?
I make a motion.
All right. A second. No discussion? Okay, all in favor of adopting the ordinance?
David first. She's second.
She was first. She was first. She was second.
Sorry.
Everybody's in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, community coordinator, have you got an update on that?
The EDC met, and following the instructions, I think you all kind of wanted us to create some sort of description for what they do, and there was some discussion between contract versus employee. And I think the recommendation was to go with the contract employee, or not a contract, but a contract type with an individual for this community coordinator. And if you have read it in the paper...
It's in its second week.
Yes, and it's to organize and execute no less than two events per year, be liaison between businesses and residents, and to help manage a website and social media accounts, as well as some other economic development-type activities. And we've asked that they submit all their proposals, cover letter, resumes, from the later than the 27th, which at which time, the EDC is hoping to kind of gather those and make a recommendation to the council, hopefully, in the next meeting.
All right, anybody have any questions for...
Have you gotten any responses?
I've had several calls.
Good.
We've had several here at the White House.
I hope they can be there right now.
Careful there, man.
Yeah. I'm just trying to bring a little levity to the mood, but anyway, yeah, we've had several that seem to be very knowledgeable, and would be good candidates, viable candidates. So I was very pleased.
That's good.
All right, the code enforcement officer, I do have one invitation, and that's Tony's son Jeff. He took the, I haven't had anybody else apply for it. I don't know that he advertised either for it. We probably need to advertise for it, but I think Jeff's probably going to be our best prospect at it right now. But I should have advertised before now, but we'll put in the paper the next couple of weeks and have a quick deadline, maybe two weeks after that, so.
There's not a lot of grass growing right now.
No, no, just trash building up and accumulating. So you can let him know that we'll have to go through the legal process of advertising him, but, you know, I look forward to him putting in his applications. All right, the, I put the fire department tanker back in here again. I think we left the last meeting with maybe some, I don't know if it's misinformation or what. It seemed that we left with the understanding that the tanker was just used on rural fires only. And in talking with the fire department, we do have some areas of the city that don't have adequate hydrant coverage. They're, we still got some four-inch hydrants which are not enough for our tanker, and some that are, some areas that don't have, you know, hydrant brick loads, so. Also, too, I mean, I'm saying that to say we do have some use for it here in town. Whenever the water tank is modified, it'll be down for quite a while, and we'd be susceptible to fires then, and we would need either a tanker or outside help for each fire. And so I just wanted us to discuss this again. The county has been approached. They have agreed to pay for half of, well, I say they have agreed, the plan is that they will pay for, it'd be in the budget for the next meeting, and...
There's approval in the paper today.
That was out of discretionary funds?
Oh, out of discretionary.
Or just the down payment?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just, they paid just to hold the tanker.
Okay.
There's another department up there, it's in Connecticut, I believe. It's in Connecticut, isn't it? Yeah. And they had another department nearby that was interested in it, but they couldn't get the necessary funding okay from their governing body. So anyway, did you all want to describe the tanker?
We all got some...
This is Tim.
I only got one copy. Dude, my printer acting crazy, but if y'all want to take it, look at it. Everything, all the features on that truck is on that list, and the pictures of the truck. It's a really nice truck to be that old model. It's only got like 21,000 miles on it. For that type of truck, that's probably a $600,000 truck brand name. And we just cannot find any used trucks below 50,000. Tankers are very, very hard to find. They use them just like we do until they fall apart, in the have-to case.
Is this one you found on the deals?
Well, they found it referred to me.
Yeah, that's the cheapest, best deal that we could possibly find.
It's a 92 model. It is a Spartan. It's a, it is a built-by-fire truck company. It's got a Detroit diesel, six-cylinder, and 450 horsepower.
Why are you looking at me? I know exactly what you're talking about.
It's got an automatic transmission, which our fire department requires, because some of our fellows don't drive straight shifts.
What's different about that truck versus the one that we had? We can actually take that on a first-hand fire anywhere to city, anywhere to county, and fight fire off that truck. It's just not a water holler. It is a multiple-use truck, and it also is going to boost our ISO ratings for the city and the county residents, because we're able to use that truck as a multifunctional truck.
Truck's only got, like, the engine's only got about 2,500 hours on it, which would be probably equivalent of a 75,000-mile vehicle. But it's only got, what, I think 25,000, 24,950 on it, I think.
I've looked at so many.
It's got 3,400-gallon stainless steel tank on it that's, should be big enough to fight any fire, especially any house fire out in the county, especially, but here locally, too. How many fires have you all already had this season? Three?
We've had three in the last three weeks.
And one today.
And had one today.
And it's the only one in the county, isn't it?
What's that?
The extra tanker.
No, Center Town's.
Center Town's got one.
Center Town's got one?
But they're, they're very hard to get because they're low in manpower right now.
Yeah.
We could page them all day long.
Yeah.
You're talking about having access to hydrants here in the city and the water going down. We'll take, for instance, from the pawn shop, Colin Far. We had Center Town's tanker, and our old tanker down there had a dump tank set up in the middle of the street, dumping water in it and sucking it back through our trucks because we just didn't have enough water. We were sucking the jail dry. We sucked numerous water heaters dry because it was just such a big fire, and we just didn't have enough, not enough volume.
Is it ready to go?
It's ready. It's ready to be picked up. We can...
There's a website if you wanted to go on and look at it.
What's that?
Well, you see the truck, the truck looks like. You saw that?
Yeah, it shows both sides.
Yeah.
At a dog's shine, I'll say that.
It's all practical in your truck.
It's equipped, it's got, it's got the lights, you know, auxiliary lighting for, it's got the bells and whistles it's supposed to have. The reason I'm bringing it back is because, other night at fiscal court meeting, Keith went representing the fire department. I wasn't able to go to the meeting, I had another engagement. And he presented this to the fiscal court, asking for their help. Well, they went ahead and said, "We'll pay the down payment for it right now," or put in a deposit to hold it.
Jason.
Can I have a motion if we go into closed session? All right, to discuss contract negotiations and...
Okay.
And just for a few minutes, all right?
I make a motion, we go into closed session.
Okay, is there a second? We'll be just discussing contract negotiation. I'd like to ask you all to stay, okay? We won't take for just a few minutes, and then we'll be right back. All right, regarding the fire department tanker, do I have a motion to advertise for bids for one?
I'll make a motion to advertise bids for a tanker.
All right, okay. Is there a second? Any discussion?
He can do it, I don't care. I'll do.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you.
I need to know why we went into close, what her, what her reason is.
Is this in the minutes?
Well, she has declared.
Okay.
I mean, you know, there's a whole different section that I, depending on the purpose of...
Okay.
I'll find the sub-section for you. Okay. Sounds good.
I thought we moved declared.
Tara's going to find out which one that fit in. But which letter? I don't know the letters by heart. Depending on how that bid, how that...
Right here.
What's that? All right, got it.
Yep.
So depending on then how the bid then is written, that you can narrow it down to where it's actually that particular tanker.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Need a motion for funding now, don't we?
Probably.
Yeah. Okay, entertain a motion to fund the possible tanker through fire department funds and from the OTF.
Yeah, we have to know the amount.
We don't know the amount till we get the truck selected.
Making money on it.
The cover of the...
Well, you can do the, a certain amount from the fire department, and then the balance.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. All right, let's, then entertain a motion that would take 30,000 from the fire department fund, and the remainder from the OTF fund to purchase whatever tanker is proposed.
I make that motion.
I'll see.
All right, all in favor? Any discussion? Favor? Okay, thank you. All right, the next is a new business item, and that's the election of fire chief since Billy Henderson has resigned. The fire department informs me that they have, they have selected Keith Puckett to be nominated as the fire chief for their department, okay? So I need a motion and a second, and then discussion. Any motion?
I'll motion.
Okay, is there a second?
No second.
Okay, now discussion.
Discussion, all the money's still run through this city for getting all expenditures and everything.
Yep.
Okay, and it will remain so.
It has to?
Yeah.
Because it's under RBA.
Purchase orders have to be, everything that's bought has to have a purchase order, they're understanding of that.
And approve them, all that.
It's just kind of going around in a little bit right now, until we get into a routine. Any more discussion?
What's his background?
Well, he's been with the fire department for a long, long time.
Since he's old enough to walk.
He was born on the truck.
He was a, he was the fire chief.
Yeah, he's been a fire chief before.
Right, oh, it was Helm, then Scott, and then Billy.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? All right, all closed? All right, motion is carried. The last thing is, any information? It's been a hectic last few weeks.
You're enjoying your job, aren't you?
Oh, yeah. Our chipper was out, our chipper was out running up limbs from the windstorm, from people's yards, things like that. The engine seized on that chipper. It's a three-cylinder Perkins engine, industrial engine, about like what goes in a farm tractor. And so we took it to, somebody Jason knows down, I think, in McLean County. Anyway, works on these things. He tore it apart, the whole bottom end, of course, is useless, you know, the crankshaft, the bearings, seals, everything. I don't know what they found in the top, but he, he called today. He said, he was at training. And he called today and had received a call from that business, and they said it's, they're going to have to have $9,500 to rebuild the engine and the thing. Now, we can't vote on it, so I'm probably have to do a telephone poll to see whether you all agree to it.
How much does a new one cost?
Basically, it's a new one. A new one, anywhere from, he originally quoted 5,000 to, I forgot what it was, 12,000 or 15,000.
Five sounds better than the nine. What's the difference here?
Well, he didn't know until he got in there how much damage it was going to be.
Oh, oh, I'm talking about a new one.
Oh, new one, 14, 15,000, something like that.
When's our next meeting, there? Isn't it early?
13th, December 13th.
Let's bring it up then.
She don't want her limbs chipped.
Yeah, he, he don't know how many limbs and leaves there are waiting for that chipper.
Okay, yeah.
Was it ran without oil, or is there some reason why it missed the...
It's old, it's old.
It is.
It's like us, Gary, it's wearing out.
A brand-new, a brand-new chipper, smaller, maybe that's where I got the 14,000. A brand-new chipper with, with a smaller engine, smaller unit, is like $14,000. The one we've got is good, and the engine's good, you know.
Can we tell her to see the chipper on the way back from your new car?
We'll look it up to the back of it. Go for it.
Not very frequently.
Well, if we don't use it too often, wouldn't it be better to contract with one of these other companies?
We'll see if there's a rental. Maybe it's...
We can try and see.
...a season or something, even if we have to do something to get by for now.
I mean, because if it costs you $10,000 every year to fix the...
Well, then, this is the first time that that engine's had to be replaced, you know, so.
Yeah, if you don't use them, they don't...
I mean, it's industrial engine, it's not like...
They sit too long. They have to be started like once a month, though, no matter whether you use them or not.
And they do get to work out.
Okay, I'll try to see if a rental or contract, contract it out, if I can find somebody to contract it out.
I'm due to do this.
Okay.
I'll make you feel good, though. I would like to comment to the city that I think the streetlights look beautiful.
They do.
That came through town.
I thought I was in no city.
If I can get them all to burn.
And maybe stop getting the trucks to hit them so they don't keep going sideways.
Yeah, the one that got hit and spun around doesn't, they're going to have to come back and fix that before we're able to pay them. Okay, but anyway, anybody else have anything? You got anything for us, Paul?
Well, if you want to bring that up tonight, or we can bring it up another night about...
Well, we can't do any action on anything. You can inform us tonight. Well, we can't do any action on anything, you can inform us tonight.
Just on reiterate about the annex out there again.
Okay, go ahead.
As far as the blood goes.
Go ahead and talk to us about it, we'll be meeting again in about three weeks.
Well, I mean, we brought it up, what, maybe two years ago, maybe? Sorry, I'm late, I was at another meeting at the airport. Just like to reiterate again about the annexing out there for the golf course, for potential going wet, and we've talked before, basically, I'd be the only one that'd be in, in the tax bracket, far as that goes, so I guess, I can go back to the fiscal court, and I think they're okay, we just have to get another party involved, private sector to come in and do alcohol sales for that matter. So, just to give you a heads up, if that's something that y'all might be interested in later on, we're, we're ready to move forward with it, so.
Who pays for the survey?
Well, if we've got a good description and whatnot and everything, we can annex it in by that, by the description, if it's been, and I believe it's been surveyed within the last 10 years.
Yeah, it has.
So we can probably look at that.
And this includes the park and the golf course, or just...
Well, that's what I would like to work on later on.
Oh, and I've kind of chatted, he's asking me a couple of questions on different things, and I've invited him to come to the EDC meeting Tuesday, if he can make it, because I know that's been a topic that the EDC has brought up as well, but I know that they want to do some things with golf course, and now that the city has gone wet, that'll open up a lot of opportunities there, and he and I chatted about how if you could get the park, that would open up the city to more locations where you could host things, because we're a little landlocked right now, and anytime we do anything at the city, you're having to shut down a major US highway. So we talked about maybe looking at that opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think it would be favorable for everybody, and we could get the city's finest to patrol out there a little bit, too, so, I mean, that's, that's a win-win for us out there, too.
They can get all them golf carts.
That's right.
That's all I've got.
Okay.
I'll holler at you.
Yeah, that's fine, just let me know what we need to do on that, and we'll go from there.
All right, anybody else have anything? Not entertain a motion?
How about the people who are on sick leave, aren't we getting any of the employees back on?
Uh, we're waiting for the determination of whether it's going to be retirement or and/or medical disability, and once that is settled, then we've, we've got another one ready to hire.
Well, but, I mean...
We're shorthanded right now.
Well, I know you are.
And I, I don't have it in the budget to hire somebody else right now.
I know that.
Okay.
But what's, is the individual the one that's trying to decide which way to go, and...
No, I think it's, it's a matter of dealing with the, the government, you know, the retirement board, the doctors, everybody coming up, getting all together and making the decision, you know? He's got, the doctor's going to have to help with the medical disability.
Yeah, I know that.
And go ahead and retire, and so, I don't know, I haven't, I've never dealt with the medical disability and retirement at the same time, or at all, so I don't know what the procedure is there. They were supposed to get back with me the first part of this week, and I haven't, they haven't got back with me yet.
For those who may not be aware, I think Stacy has her festival this weekend, doesn't she celebrate?
Does she have a rain date? I haven't talked to them.
I have no clue.
I haven't talked to her today, and I got caught, and so I talked to her, well, she's out, so I had talked to Vicki, but Vicki's helped her, but I don't know if they have a rain date, just in case.
But I'm hoping there's reindeer.
What are we standing on, the patrolling the two-hour parking downtown?
Well, I don't know, how, how bad do you think it is? Because I look out a lot of times, and I see Main Street's pretty empty, you know, and you think it's bad enough?
I think it's, parking is a major problem downtown, and we got the lots there that we've just finished up, and there's cars parked in there, backed in, so they came in the wrong way.
Right.
Sit there overnight and all the next day.
Oh.
Overnight, there's not going to be a whole lot of people going to park, but...
Well, it's, the two hour, the two hours just to 4:30 anyway, I think.
Yeah, but it's, they stayed all the next day.
Yeah, again, you know, it's a matter of keeping a record of how, how many people are down there, and...
Well, how many no two-hour parking signs is there down Main Street?
That's quite a few.
About every three parking spaces.
Yeah.
Why, if people see that that signs are there, and they can park there all day long, and nothing happens to them, why do they pay attention to any signs in Hartford?
Well, we do try to enforce that. Someone parked backwards today, went down there and got on the move. You talking about just there on Main Street in front of your store?
Well, not in front of my store, because I...
But up and down there on both sides?
Both sides.
You know, I've been taking pictures with my phone, and then try to come back two, two and a half hours, see if there's any, look at my phone, see if any of the cars are still there, and if they are, they get a ticket, not a state ticket, but a city ordinance ticket.
There's still people parking in front of the store over there, Home Health Store.
Yeah.
But the ordinance we passed, we voted on tonight, should help take care of that.
Anybody have anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So I make a motion if you're...
Okay, my second, all in favor? Thank you. End of.